I'd like to call the meeting to order of the Athol Royal Subregional School Committee, Wednesday, September 18th, 2019. The First Line of Business, Mitch. We've been missing the first season.
Cheers, guys, cheers to the new season.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
General housekeeping item that I kind of slap off on, and I should be doing this every meeting, is just to announce to everybody who's here that you are being videotaped for future playback on AOTV and also inclusion on the district website. And also, Craig Vine, reporter from Athol Daily News, does voice record, so I should be telling you that every meeting. Uh, approval of minutes. Minutes for August 21st, 2019. Is there a motion?
I think motion to accept.
Second. Motion made in seconded. Any questions, comments, et cetera? Seeing none. All those in favor? Close. Uh, public input. Is there anything on that? Nothing? Thank you, Josh. All right. Student representative report. I will just, um, our student representative has joined us this evening. He is the esteemed Riley Tane, the president of the class of 2020.
Thank you all for inviting me here tonight. Um, fall sports begin on Friday, August 16th, with the football team holding its first official practice. All other fall sports begin on August 22nd. Currently have 200 high school and middle school students participating in one of our 12 fall interscholastic athletic teams. On Monday, August 26th, the Pride Group, which is a group of 10th through 12th grade students and staff members, were admitted to supporting and promoting the Red Raider Pride Web, held an orientation for all new students. The purpose of the orientation was to introduce new students to the Athol High School community and to get them comfortable before their first ed. Wednesday, August 28th, was our first day of school. We welcomed new students and 10 new faculty members. 14 seniors have begun the Health Career Opportunity Program in conjunction with Mount Moncheese Community College. These seniors will be taking four college-level courses throughout the year in classrooms at Athol High School with professors from Mount Moncheese and Community College. Julie Bouchard was announced as our new theater director. Auditions were held for the late November performance of Annie. Cast breakdowns include 25 high school students, six middle school students, and eight elementary school students. On Thursday, August 29th, our student athletes partnered with the Athol Royal and Athletic Association for its annual discount card fundraiser. All proceeds from the fundraiser go directly back on supporting athletic needs such as equipment and facility upgrades. On Monday, September 15th, our ninth and 10th grade students began their fall math testing in math and will begin their ELA testing tomorrow on Friday. Former school committee member and Royal State resident Bobby Newman visited each social studies classroom on Tuesday, September 17th, to provide each student with their own copy of the United States Constitution. A three-member team from Yonder visited the school on Tuesday, September 17th, to provide small group presentations to all students regarding the detrimental effects of self-unuse in relationship to interrupted education. They will be returning tomorrow morning to issue each student their Yonder pouch with full implementation beginning at 7:40 a.m. Next week is our homecoming weekend. All of our teams will be playing a home game on either Friday or Saturday. Friday night features our football team, or SMAR, at 7:00 p.m. The schedule for Saturday is as follows. 9:00 a.m., park parade leading Riverbend School. 11:00 a.m., field hockey versus Amherst. 12:15, girls volleyball versus Pioneer Valley Christian. 1:30 p.m., girls soccer versus Greenfield. 3:30 p.m., boys soccer versus Taconic. 7:00 p.m., homecoming dance with the theme of Under the Sea. First-term prox reports will be issued for all students on Monday, September 30th, with Athol High School's open house taking place a few days later on Wednesday. October 2nd, beginning at 5:30 p.m.
Thank you very much. Moving on to recognition for spooked the Carla.
I have nothing here.
My apologies for being late.
That's okay.
Nothing bad.
Nobody would have noticed unless you said so. Ah, Mitch.
So I have one certificate and a, uh, fed at Athol side. You folks would have to be camera clear so this person can get adequate recognition. But this is a certificate to, um, our, um, science teacher at, um, at, um, Arms Middle School, Jeff Soder. Uh, it says, uh, let me note that on September 18th, you were recognized for the purchase of drones to study kinetic and potential energy. And, uh, the way this came about is, uh, Jeff contacted me on Facebook and indicated that he wanted to buy eight drones for his science class so they could study kinetic and potential energy. And I don't know what size drones they are, but, uh, in any case, I imagine were fairly expensive. And he, uh, uh, did kind of a, um, a, uh, fund, uh, like a GoFundMe on, uh, Facebook. And, uh, there were a lot of people from the community that contributed, and he was able to, uh, to raise the money that was necessary to purchase those drones. So I thought that showed great initiative, and I'm really eager to find out the results of all the experiments and get some photos. So, uh, thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Jeff.
And, uh, this will go to his teacher, that's the, uh, president of state. Thank you, Mitch. Jeff? Jeff?
No.
No? Ken?
I'm on seven.
Is there actually anything from you for, under that card?
Nope.
Finished business. Okay. As you, uh, are aware of that, I thank Jeff for providing the, uh, same process to me that, uh, she did last year. And, uh, between myself and Cheryl, we did come up with the, uh, revised documents. You've been provided with them. Just for public knowledge this evening, briefly, the, uh, evaluation was scored and the averages taken and those were the grades. Uh, so just to announce that under step one, assess progress according to goals. Professional practice goals have been met. Student learning goals met. District improvement goals met. And then under, uh, the indicators, standard one in structural leadership, proficient. Standard two, management and operations, proficient. Standard three, family and community engagement, proficient. And standard four, professional culture, proficient. That's the cumulative document, uh, that was agreed upon, um, that we, uh, just announced publicly. Uh, if anybody wants a copy of this, public, public information, public document, you know, we can contact, you contact the office, and then we'll provide you a copy. Any questions? Yes?
Uh, I'd like to comment. I'd like to, uh, be brought to the super general on a very successful, uh, evaluation and, uh, also on the, uh, the great progress that this school system has made in this past year and in two years since, uh, you know, the help.
Jeff?
Hi too, very much. What Mitch said, it's great to see that the superintendent has accomplished so many things. You know, we have objectives that are clearly met. That tells us that you're doing the job, and I appreciate the job you do.
Yes. I just wanted to take one minute to say thank you to the committee, uh, for reviewing and, uh, reevaluating that document. I also want to say thank you to the team, and that includes myself, the district administrators, teachers, and staff, because I can't reach goals unless, how would people are willing to be on board and for it. And I think we've done a really good job at building a team here, um, in Athol Royal State. So, uh, for me, that, that evaluation is representative of everyone, not just myself. So I just want to say thank you, everyone, for all of your efforts as well.
Uh, and your business. ARFACT. Cameron White Shirley Mitchell off, and I don't know if she has other people with her tonight?
I do have a couple of people that are here in the audience.
If you would mind, just, just introduce them, sort of, in the middle of the day up?
Sure, sure. So, again, I'm in counseling for the drug-free community for family engagements here. And Kena Sowee from Valing Our Children is here. Uh, Police of Chief, Chief of Athol was unable to make it today, and our school officers are able to. A couple other people just said regrets, apologizing for not being able to make it. They wanted to let you know. So I'm gonna pass out our guy really quick. So ARFACT is Athol Royal's family assistance connection team. So our hope was to be able to build a team of people throughout our school district that can come together, um, and people can make referrals to this team. It's essentially a hub of people to offer supports to families. Um, it's done by, that's Cheryl, will make you, huh? You're up. Kind of breaks it down in the document. Um, so there's 25 people currently that sit on this team. Uh, we have people from the YMCA, from state agencies, Department of Children and Families, Department of Adult Health. Stephanie Baldwin has just gotten in touch with me. She's associated with the Department of Development and Services. We have agencies like Valing Our Children, the North Quonin Community Coalition, uh, the Salvation Army sits at the table. We're looking to, like, have resources for every community, right? And so if there's a family that we're aware of, or a student that we're aware of on the school side, we can put a referral in to this ARFACT team that meets once a month for an hour. Um, and it will not have any information on it, except, you know, we have a child who's age nine, uh, who, you know, we've just found out their family is homeless. There's three people in it. And who at this table can help this family and support this family? And so, uh, from all the resources that are in the room, they would then identify who can help this family. And then I would be able to give information to them and follow up with them to make that connection, to offer supports to the families and the community. So, with that being said, we've had five meetings so far, and they've done a lot of hard work, the team has. We've created a mission, and as you can see in the packet that I just provided you, the mission is really partnering with families to identify and reduce barriers by offering connection to local resources and promoting positive outcome. So our, that is what our hope is, right? Like, is for that. And then just very briefly, you know, um, the team, when it came together, we first, Kate and I went out to see a model that's happening right now in the city of Chelsea. And it's called a hub meeting, and there, it's huge. City of Chelsea, pretty big, right? Lots of resources and stuff. And so everybody kind of contributed and said, this is what we can do. We could, you know, minimally, I would receive the referrals that come in. We'd make sure that there is a release of information, so nothing is done without the families involved as well. That was, that was huge. Like, the family needs to know, but we're not sharing names. We're not talking about the families there. You know, we're just really trying to offer support and then connect and then to supports and services. And then how to follow up afterwards, is this helpful? Um, so, does anybody have any questions?
Jeff?
Yes, I may have missed it. Which agencies are connected to this and helping the ministry?
Sure. So, we have, um, state agencies from DCF. So we'll be here at the North Quonin Hatch Office. Joel LaPonte works for the Department of Mental Health Services for the Burnt Moon County Youth in this area. The United Arc is on it as well, too. Valing Our Children, the North Quonin Community Coalition.
Thank you.
We have Athol Credit Union, um, People.
Mark Bus.
Mark, yeah, thank you. I have a list. So we have a gentleman, Bruno Fisher, from Mark Bus, because a lot of our issues centered around transportation. And just want to make sure that he's aware of this and what can we do to work together. The Salvation Army is there, uh, the chief of police and school resource officer, political and support options is there, YMCA, uh, Athol Hospital through Rebecca Mansa, who's presenting next, um, sits on it, Jimmy Gani for bases, also through Haywood Hospital is there. Let's see, who else? Uh, the Athol Orange Housing Director, Kristen Martin, said she can't make it to the meetings, but if there is something that comes related to housing, that she's willing to, you know, hoggle up, and I can be the connector to that. And then the Family Resource Center, Benny Kings as well, that's connected. And we just had another person to sign up, and she's really excited, the Children's Advocacy Center out of Heartland County, and they also service North Quonin.
I just want to compliment you and bring all of that together, because I know there have been a lot of efforts in past years to bring all of this group together, and I think that's terrific.
Thank you.
Carla?
I just, I want to say, this is really, it's typical of something I've been seeing in the system for the last year or two, is a problem is identified, a team is assembled, and the next thing you know, you've got a program going. They use the word, the DESI people use the word nimble in talking about the progress in the school system. We are, it's another example of the, the really exceptional nimbleness of response to identify new needs. So congratulations to everybody involved.
Thank you. It's a great opportunity to, for people in network, trying to catch up with somebody else and like, hey, chief, I want to ask you a quick question, you know? And so it's, it's a great opportunity, you know, just trying to bring the silence down and get everybody talking.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Telehealth?
Yes, we have a set of individuals here, um, from Haywood Hospital, to the time on progress we've made with telehealth. You remember last year, um, we began a online, uh, mental health service for students at the high school. And so they're going to talk a little bit about the progress we've made and how the program's going.
So my name is Martha, and I'm the program manager for the Telebehavioral Counseling Program. We have three high schools in the area that work with us. Athol, Mahar, and, um, Naragansett, not to be forgotten. We, over the last, uh, year, we've had 93 students served in these schools and 1,143 sessions, the behavioral sessions in schools. And here at Athol, we've served 30 students in six months and have, have had 386 sessions at the high school. To my left, not ever to be ignored, because whatever, we would not have a program at the high school, is Rebecca Mansa. And she's the community health worker who's embedded in the high school and has an office there. Let me explain a little bit about tele. What we do is we have clinicians sign to Athol High School, and Becca is a member of this, considered a member of the staff there. She works for the guidance office, Amanda. This started off, this with us, and Darcy at the beginning. Darcy actually had faith in us to sign off and say, you know what? If you're, if you're going to get that million-dollar grant, I'm in, I'm with you. And I greatly, greatly appreciate that. And we went for it. We actually got it. One of 14 in the nation, um, only one in this school. And I'm like, wow, this is really amazing. This is, I couldn't believe we even did it, and we did. So what we do is we have community health workers embedded in the schools, and we have our clinicians, they actually work for Mobley. They're hired under the Quonin Tree as the telehub. And they zoom in via Zoom. It's a, uh, internet-based program, and we call them affectionately our floating heads. We love them. We can take them anywhere. We can put them under our, our lab and take them to IEP meetings. We can sit, they sit with Becca, and they do clinical behavioral health services in the schools. And we're just really, really thrilled that we're able to do this with you. I'm not going to take a lot of time tonight. I want to talk a little bit more about what's been going on, and let Becca tell you about what it really looks like in a building. But I, I, I do want to say, I was on a school board, and I was a teacher for 20 years, so I know your time is so valuable. I'm not going to babble on, and I'll really try to stay right on track for you tonight. First of all, we have Jen, who's, she's your clinician. She's our, affectionately, our floating head. She's had rave results. Students seem to be connecting with her very well, um, and we're excited about that. And Becca. And Becca came from Naragansett, and she decided to move this way over to Athol because, yeah, exactly. She wanted to be here, and I'm just so proud. It's funny, when we had one grant that started this process, it was a pilot, and then it ended. And the day was my last day, and I was going to the Peter Sam General Store for See Ya Later, Maureen luncheon with my friend, and we got the grant that day. And so Becca had left, my other community health worker had left from Mahar, and had moved on to other jobs, and we found out they got it if they returned to us. And that said a lot about really wanting to be part of this program. So, we have, um, excellent collaboration. I want to thank everybody, the guidance team, and the principals over at Athol High School, for everything they've done to set up this program and get this going with us, to refer students. Um, at the present time, I think we have close to 36, and so we're very, very full and pretty much done at this point. And, um, because we, our clinician can only see so many, and it has been brought to them, like, can you hire another one and get us enough? I'd love to, but I have to get through the grant first. You need to understand, it's a highly evaluated grant. It's high research. Pioneer is actually our treatment-as-usual school. We're actually comparing and contrasting students and doing a huge evaluation on this. What the federal government wants to do is prove evidence-based. If they can prove evidence-based, we'd be the only program in the country saying that this model really works. And that's very exciting for us. And I, I'm, I'm an old lady, I'm getting up there, um, who says my orthopedist today, but anyway. Um, but, but it's really fun, because I've never done anything I'm not passionate about, and I truly believe in this program. And I just, I talked to Wyoming, and I talked to Houston County, Maine, and I talked to people out in rural America, and they want to be able to give young people who have experienced trauma and have had a tough time, the ability to be able to do this in a school. So we're just really, really excited about that. Um, I just want to say that we've had fabulous results the first year. We're moving into our second year, still wonderful. Our parents are connecting positively with you and with our clinician, which is great. And, you know, we are having some challenges because it's popular, and people like it, and students love it. I mean, it's the craziest thing, they'll go into a room, and Becca will tell you this, but they go in and they just open up, and our clinicians are finding that they're actually maybe headway with students in two to six months versus years. For some reason, they're connecting. And using Zoom, they can share screens, they can chat if they don't feel like talking using a chat feature, they can share the music they like together, then they really do connect well with the students. So it's not like, it's different for those of us, like I say, or a bit older, for you still like face-to-face therapy, but in all honesty, they're loving it. So Becca, I just want you to talk a little bit about, um, what happens in the school, how it works.
Sure. So the first year went really well. We started back in Jimmy Lee Merritt. And then going into the second year, we actually continued through the summer, and most of the kids continued sessions that they wanted to themselves. Um, so going into the second year, we carried as well the same case load. All the kids wanted to continue with Jen. Um, so we're actually over capacity, like she mentioned right now, which is a good problem to have. Um, the kids really feel comfortable talking to Jen. We have a good range of, like, athletes, trauma, we're really closely with Shirley, but kids like with attention issues. Um, so I try to track their attendance, their grades, their behavior. And I would say in the first year, we noticed like a huge difference in the attendance. So the absences decreased and behaviors were better. So really trying to target those three areas. Um, we're really close to the guidance. Um, we're a part of the IEP meetings. I definitely keep communication open with everybody, so if there's a student who's having a tough day, we can try to get them in, even if it's not their normal session time, which helps, I think, to help them kind of get in a better space and then be able to go back to class. So that's one convenience of having it right there in the school. Um, and like Maureen talked about, they're just very comfortable with the modality. This is how they communicate nowadays, is over the screen and with their phones. Um, so we haven't really had any issue with people feeling uncomfortable. So, and we try to keep it private and confidential, and just kind of, I always tell them that we're working together as a team to support them, and they seem to agree with that.
We've been able to talk about youth to, uh, the New England School Nurses Conference this summer. We've gone, we're on our way to Westfield State University to speak. We've spoken at Boston University in Simmons to talk about this program. And actually, yesterday, at, at the Club of the Tree, BSAS and DESI came out to talk to us about this, because they feel that they'll be able to use this modality to reach students who maybe aren't coming to school due to anxiety or are in DYS and not be able to get clinical services. So there, a lot of people are watching us, do this one work well, and you are at the cutting edge of this. So I asked Darcy and I asked Kate to let us come today just to thank you personally, be here and say thank you for supporting this program, thank you for supporting us. Um, and hopefully, at the end of the three years, we're going to, we have an evaluator from Simmons College. We have an entire internal review board watching us. We're going to get wonderful information, and then we're going to be able to share that. I hope to be back. And I hope to come back every year just to check in and let you know how we're doing, because it's just so important to have team. You know, when, um, we were just talking about collaboration in this community and about the work people do, I've never seen a community like Athol do this. And I have to say this, and it's an amazing community. And so to be able to bring this to you, to get this, and to be able to help students, that's the bottom line. So, you know, I just want to thank you so much if you have, I, I do want to say, if you have any, if you want to come see it in action, if you want to come visit, if you want to come sit with me and talk with me about it more, because I know we have just a limited time here, but I'm, I'm open any day, anytime for you to come find me, and we'll have that conversation. Because, um, it's a really fun program. It's, you know, I'm going to go out, I'm tired after this one, but this is the one that I'm going to enjoy doing at the end of this, at the end of this period for me, because it's just been so amazing. So I thank you so much.
First of all, thank you for the acrobat, for being here, presenting this. I also wanted to, uh, to make sure I get your names correctly. What are your roles exactly?
Um, I'm Maureen, so I'm the program manager. Um, and I've always wanted to meet you, Mitch, because I have seen your pictures, and I've never met you, and now I see you, you're kind of like a superstar.
We didn't set this up.
Superstar, and I'm like, well, that's me. But honestly, I'm Maureen, I'm the program manager for the, for this entire program, so I work with Naragansett, Mahar, and I'm at Athol, and I have created all of the stuff that is going on. We actually are expanding at one of our schools with a Blue Cross Blue Shield grant to start working in family, uh, telehealth programs and expanding to family services for, um, psychoeducational and, um, programming, and also, um, just family sessions at night using Zoom. So we're really looking bigger to, to expand this a bunch more.
And the therapists that the students talk to, um, is that you were there for those calls?
Oh, no, they're, they're LMHCs or LSCSWs, and they work remotely from home. They, they zoom in, um, and, and to the students and to the school every, every day.
And how many, how many are we working with?
Uh, so right now, we have about 36, and we have to have a waitlist right now, actually.
Sort of maxed out a bit.
I love your enthusiasm, obviously. As far as you're concerned, this is a huge success. What, um, evidence are the funders going to be looking at to measure success?
I should just get your email, because I could send you the document. Massive document. They want to know travel save, they want to know sessions, how many were conducted, they want to know. And every student has a unique identifier, and I don't want to go to evaluation too much, but no student will ever be identified in this program. Everyone has a unique number. But they want to know, um, a lot of demographics, you know, about the student, and then they want to know, um, biggest is if we do clinical assessments, and they follow those to see if we're being successful. And they evaluate month initial, one, two, and three, and then they also value it every three, three months. So it's a really intensive, and the reason I know it is because I'm a little responsible for that, and so I have to be the one that collects all that data and gets all that information with the community health worker, so. But it is a huge tool, and it's, it can be daunting if you're not an evaluator, so I've had that big old learning curve. But, um, but it is a, um, it's a big evaluation. And I can talk more if you, I can even send you a shovel, too, but it's a big thing. If you have a consultation, you might have to email.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we have some information here.
Pupil services update?
Yes, Catherine and Kristi, a bunch of them, are coming up. Uh, just to fill you in on the OGT progress that we made, so that everybody's clear. So just stay a few minutes.
I'm excited you two are coming up.
I'm going to let Kristy speak because she's done the majority of the work around keeping this organized and things as they are.
So to give you an update, last meeting we talked about, we presented a whole bunch of information about the functionality of OTPT services. And we have, I wanted to let you all know that we have brought on our own staff. We have hired two OTRs, so Certified Registered Occupational Therapists. Brandi Powers, Willy, she has been embedding herself into the preschool program, which is what we were really hoping to do with our design and make sure that those kiddos are getting that OT service along with the speech service right when they come in the door, when they start with us. We also have Jean Pow, sorry, Jean Davis, who is also working part-time. Brandi's working part-time as well. And Jean is focusing service provision, grades one through postgraduate up to age twenty-two. And she is also supervising the two CODAs that we brought up, our Certified Occupational Therapy Assistance. And we have one full-time Coda, her name is Melissa Campieri. She has primary degrees at Aces. And we have a part-time Coda, Missy Kalanowski, who is working two days primarily up at ARNS and at Aces one day a week. Brandi is also covering the OT services at RCS. Our PT services, we were able to bring onboard with us Lorraine McDonald. She runs McDonald PT Services. She came highly recommended to us by Winchon in public schools and Mahar. She also has a physical therapy assistant that's working with her. Her name is Kim Wynek. So so far, they have immersive all over the schools and we're hearing good things all around. Teachers are happy and they are just in love with our kids and our staff and have been, have felt really welcome so far. So they're getting their service provision up and operating. They are, they spend some time setting up the therapy room and creating schedules and meeting with staff and they've already jumped in, they're attending IEP meetings in five or four weeks. So it's been a really smooth transition so far.
I thought I saw Mitch's hand while I put that. Maybe I was just pre-.
We have, so this is the first time in each is anyway that we own two occupational therapists, the employees of the district, which is wonderful. When I think of our history and how many kids we've identified as special needs kids of this prevention, I think it's in Latin, in that order, of our kids that have been Latin. So I'm very excited to hear that. Secondly, I just have a question about PT. You have an agency essentially that's doing that work with, are we in a position yet where we have a need for a full-time PT?
Our physical therapy, the students who are receiving physical therapy in the district are at low numbers right now. So it's more cost-effective to contract with Lorraine.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
So next up, we have Molly and all of our academic coaches coming up. Our academic coach, our math coach and our literacy coach, I believe, coming up. And they're going to present to you our PT plan for the district. As you know, in the state review, this is one of the things that they were looking for. So they'll explain to you the process that they used and how they developed the plan. Copy should be going around to the committee as soon as everybody gets a copy. We'll have Molly begin.
I thought you were going to say it all the way. So in case you're not aware, Brandy Brown is our math coach for kindergarten through eighth grade. She was our coach last year and is continuing on in that role. She is going to be working across any of the three schools, depending on where the need arises for coaching support. Kelly Target is working in a similar capacity as a K through eight literacy coach in our district. That's a new position for her. She came out of the classroom, she was for a long time, a few years, teaching sixth grade BLA at ARNS and last year transitioned into a position to do Title I support here at Aces and this year we're lucky enough to have her in the coaching role. And Elizabeth Redley is the academic coach that has been newly hired to support teachers at Oracle High School as well. So we're excited to have them, I dare say a dream team, and they're here as support for our teachers and our system moving forward. And so we're here tonight to present to you our professional development plan for the district. You heard Darcy, I'm not going to read these slides word for word you have in front of you, but we're seeing those before. Thank you guys for the visuals. This year, we really took a look at the professional development plan that we put together for districts and we followed a protocol from the state in terms of this four-stage planning cycle, where the first stage is planning professional development for any district is really looking at setting goals. And so what that looks like is it looked like us taking a really hard look at what our data showed and where our areas of need were. So we looked at student data when we did that, including MCAS scores, the benchmark scores and any other assessment data we had. We took a look at feedback from teachers through last year's teacher focus groups, where teachers provided feedback in terms of what's going well and what the needs they had are. We looked at the state review that we had last year and the successes, challenges and recommendations that came out of that document. We also looked at information from the John Hopkins observations and feedback from teachers through their focus groups, as well as what our strategic plan goals are and our literacy plan goals. So we use all of that data and information to really say, what are our high priority areas and how are we going to identify and match professional development to those needs? And then what are the goals and outcomes that we're going to look for to determine those are successful? So that's what you have in front of you. What you'll see is that it's organized into three cohorts. It's organized into our three strategic plan goals and the outcomes should be directly tied to our strategic plan outcomes. And so the coaches are going to assist today in presenting a summary and overview of what our professional development is in those three realms. Literacy, tiered systems of social emotional support, student engagement and the use of data to inform instruction for our district.
If you're following along with the PowerPoint, on page two, this is where it starts our literacy goal. So one of our vendors that we're working with is Keys to Literacy. And previously, the veteran teachers have worked with them on comprehension and vocabulary. And we wanted to make sure that our newly hired teachers carry on with that, that professional development so that we could all have a common language, so that we could have common structures and strategies to work with our kiddos on, like I said, vocabulary and comprehension. We are also bringing in Collins Writing this year to support our writing instruction. And again, this was due to not necessarily common language across all green and little buildings. We had lower than we'd like MCAS scores in correlation with the state. And also when we did our learning walks and our walkthrough tool with the district, forty-two percent of observed classrooms showed evidence of fully implementing. Obviously, we want to get higher than that, we would like all classrooms to. We are also working with Keys to Literacy to, to look at our reading foundations. And this is primarily for our Title I teachers and our special education teachers. As a former Title I teacher, it was always, we weren't really sure who was servicing who and we all wanted to, we all wanted to take all the kids and we all wanted to get them what they needed. So we're working with Keys to Literacy to develop common language and clearly define roles for Title I and special education, for assessments, for interventions and things like that. If you go ahead to page three, we brought in a woman named Kathy Picaro and she's working with our special education teachers to increase staff knowledge, best practices, evaluating, interpreting and sharing results and writing her books IDPs. We are finding that the number of our students identified on education plans is higher than the state. We've worked really hard to decrease that. But we still have a lot of staff who are getting their IEPs, return stuff for corrections, just doing a lot of consistency in language between the evaluation results and the identification of the disability. So we're working to streamline all of that so everybody has a clear understanding of what those need to look like. And Molly's going to speak to some math literacy goals that we have.
So you may have noticed in our strategic plan under literacy, we do have a goal in relation to early numeracy skills and math literacy. And so this is really important for us because as we look at our data, we've seen some strong growth in the areas of literacy. So we've put a lot of structures and supports in place for interventions and remediation for literacy. We're now starting that same thing with math. And so if you recall last year, when we did the benchmark presentation, we saw a lot more growth in our literacy scores than we saw in our math scores. And one of the things we attribute that to is the level of support and the prioritization of literacy. And so now we're starting those foundations with math as well. And so our K five math teachers are participating in a course that the state's funding for us called ABMR one. And that is a course where they're learning strategies and techniques to assess students' early literacy, excuse me, early numeracy skills to find out what their strengths and gap areas are. And then they're actually teaching the teachers what are remediation techniques you can use if students have these gaps in early numeracy skills so that we can build those foundational skills that get in the way often with students who are up in the grades or in the complexity of mathematics. So it's that foundational understanding of mathematics and number sense as well. So we're really excited about that opportunity and we've got great introductory teachers who have that course for two days now and will continue on in the next few months. And lastly, as a springboard to the work we did last year with Keys to Literacy, we're now bringing in another consulting group called Collins Writing, who's going to be working with us now on really looking at where are our students in terms of their writing skills? So they're going to be working with teachers to identify aspects of rigor in writing and how to really give students solid feedback that's going to move them forward as writers. So last year was really about getting techniques and routines in place to get kids writing more. And now we're going in and saying, okay, they're writing more, now we have to evaluate that writing and really think about how do we increase the rigor and clarity and the level of detail in their writing. So our teachers will be focusing, focusing on that during the second portion of the year this year. The next section of professional development is around our social and emotional and student engagement goals and Elizabeth's going to speak to those.
So this, the outcome or the overall goal of this element of the strategic plan is to create and use a tiered system of socio-emotional and behavioral supports to improve overall student engagement. In essence, if the students don't have the emotional capacity to learn in that moment, the academics just won't come to them or they feel as if they can access the content. So to do this, we will hold some in-house professional developments within an SCL focus, socio-emotional learning focus. That will be led by the guidance department for the Athol Rural and Regional School District. The rationale for these trainings come from the parent survey, the teacher focus groups, the district review report, as well as the district learning walks, in which they glean that teachers felt that they needed some training around this, that parents, twenty percent, twenty-one percent of comments aligned to concerns around things bullying. And also in the learning walks, there were forty, forty-two percent of classrooms observed were fully implementing indicator seven. So that means that fifty-eight percent were not, in essence. As a part of fulfilling this strategic plan, the goal, and that's on the second slide, that teachers will have instructional strategies that will help them to embed these socio-emotional learning skills into the content. Meaning while they're teaching science, math and English and history, they're also giving the students the skills to grapple with any emotions that might arise around the learning process or in grappling with that context. And I should also highlight that there are five elements to this socio-emotional learning, identified as self-awareness, social awareness, relationship skills, responsible decision-making and most importantly, self-management. So if they do get upset, they have these skills and techniques to deal with it in the moment. And if the teachers also feel that they, feel that they have the strategies in the classroom to deal with children upset. Finally, this is this kind of last slide, just one highlighted I'd like to add, is that they, when they, when they are completed with these trainings for the staff, that the competencies will be embedded in all classrooms for indicator seven.
In addition to that, we also have another training around socio-emotional learning, which is a, not a full district training, this is not something we're providing to all of our teachers yet, but we have a team through a grant that has been working with Zaretta Hammond on what does culturally responsive teaching look like and what is the brain research behind that tell us and how does that support teaching and learning? And so this is something that our grant team of, I think there's five or six folks on that team, is that correct? They've been going last year to some state seminars to learn about these ideas and they started bringing them back to the administrative team. And the goal this year is for us to build a common language of understanding with the administrative team around culturally responsive practices so that we are then prepared to start rolling that with teachers in the following years. So we're starting that work, our teachers aren't quite starting that work yet. So that's another piece of that pillar with strategic clinical.
One thing I want to add is we have assigned Winchon Hill District to be the liaison or the person kind of overseeing that work and that's Kewa Stanley at Aces. She has been a part of the, a part of the training from the beginning, so she will be leading that process.
And then Brandy's going to talk about the, the professional development underneath our last pillar, which is around data, data decision-making and the use of data for outcomes for students.
All right. So we have three different professional development opportunities going on for this third plan goal. The first is coaching high-impact teacher teams training, which is being done by Research for Better Teaching. Our administrators, coaches, lead teachers and department chairs are all taking place in that and have taken place in some of it already. Our goal is to train teachers on effective practices through the FAR cycle, which is similar to our data cycle that we were using last year. It's just taking it a little bit further and a little bit deeper. The outcomes and the way you're really going to see this is the highly structured common planning times. Aside from being at those common planning times, if you go into our ARRSD data portal, our agendas, common planning agendas and notes will be there as well. The reason we decided to do this was that during our teacher focus groups, our teachers were saying, we know how to collect the data, we've been collecting the data, but what do we do now? And we need more time for the what's next. And then through our district comprehensive review, it was also recommended that we provide PD on the data analysis and increasing the student learning outcomes from that. The second one that we're doing is unpacking standards and rigor, which is also being done by RBT. That's for all six through twelve teachers and then three through five BLA teachers. And that's because our three through five math teachers are in the ABR, A B M R one. Our goal for this is to train teachers on effective practices for increasing student achievement through step one of the FAR cycle. So this is really clarifying the learning journey for them. What are the targets and the success criteria? What are the standards asking us to do? Where's the rigor inside these standards and how are we getting students in there? And this aligns with our learning walk tool, indicators one and two, if you look at that. So that's one way we'll see it. We can also see it through our Athol student plans and through a common formative assessments. They will have clear success criteria for what a successful one looks like. The reason we, the rationale behind that was we had RBT come in and do a SLICE protocol in our schools. And through that SLICE protocol, as they were looking at the artifacts, they indicated that there was a strong need for focusing on the intended rigor of the standards. John Hopkins also came in at the end of last year and they noticed that fifty-three percent of the classrooms observed across the district showed evidence of lessons targeting the rigor of the standards, which means we had a little less than half that were not doing that. And then the last part was through our district report, it was observed that the high school classes, the activities weren't matching the objectives and the targets and the standards. And then our last one is our common planning time meetings. So we had common planning times meetings last year, they just look all different this year. This is planned and led by the coaches, our lead teachers and our department chair. This is planned and led by the coaches, our lead teachers, and our department chairs, and this is all teachers in the district pre-K to 12. The goal of this is to provide more time to really get into and through that FAR cycle with our data so that we can come out, our outcome can be our continuous and daily informed adjustments to practice and that individualized instruction for students. And the way we will see this is through our walkthrough tool, indicators five and six, which is the adjustment to practice, and you'll be able to see how those align, that aligns to the standards. And this came from our teachers reporting that they really need the increased time of common planning. Last year, we were once a week at 45 minutes common planning, and this year, we are two to three a month after school for 80 minutes. So that really gives those teachers time to dig into that data and really understand what it means in relation to the standards.
So that's our overview of the plan. We really talked today about the goal setting and the plan piece. As we move forward, we'll be doing a lot of work to assess the impact in relation to our outcomes, as well as general teacher feedback on how they feel the effectiveness of the professional development went. And we'll use that reflection in this cycle to really think about how impactful this professional development is and do we need to make any of course corrections or continue on the plan that we've put in place. Does anyone have questions? Joe? I don't think so, sorry.
Just an observation, tremendous work, and obviously the plan is well-articulated and so on. The people did a nice job presenting theirs and so on, too. Thanks for that. Just a thought, strategic plan goal two, going to be hard to measure, I would think, and I know it's also kind of, everybody's learning about, you know, the methods that are going to be used in that area in the future. I would be interested to see how you plan to evaluate that down the road, you know, on just observation and learning walks and so on. I'm sure there are other measurables that you could use that could kind of really give us a sense of how well it's working.
What I would say to you is that we do have a team working on the SEL plan, and they have a set of measures in there to go back to that document that was given. That outlines exactly how they're going to measure the work in the end. So we do have that in place. This probably just to kind of explain the details of how they're operationalizing it. But they also this year received a matching grant, we paid so much, and I think the state paid so much, to further their understanding of what indicators we need to look at and also what further strategies we need to work at with teachers. So I think we are going to have a really good handle on that.
Once again, I'm impressed by how responsive this is to the issues directly raised by the teachers as well as by the outside evaluators, that you really are listening to the people in the schools and how rapidly the response is implemented. It blows my mind, it's nothing I've ever seen before in this system.
Mitch? I'm impressed by the presentation and the individuals that we have in place. I'm also impressed by the organizational structure that we have in the district. And the fact that, as you know Chuck, we fought for quite a while as to the importance of coaches, literacy coaches and numeracy coaches within our district. And it's nice to see that we have three strong coaches right now with good, strong supervision for them. My only question would be, have you done, I'm assuming you have done surveys of teachers in terms of what their feeling is about the professional development? Are they happy with the direction that the professional development is going? And am I sure consider their, you indicate and consider their concerns as well?
We have done a survey per se, but we've gathered data from them in two ways. We've gathered that through the teacher focus groups that, I think that's, what, three times a year, three times a year? And then we also do exit tickets where we gather feedback from them during those professional developments. And we really, we saw some of that evidence today during academic excellence. We really take that and say, what are the positive trends referring from teachers on this professional development? What are the questions they still have? What are the things that aren't really working for them so that we can use that information to adjust moving forward? So that's part of those second two portions we didn't talk much about today. We were definitely gathering that feedback, not in a survey per se, but like a survey through written information, not necessarily on a rating scale, but we're gathering that data and making adjustments.
Well, I mean, of course, the biggest thing in professional development now versus years ago is that everything is inextricably tied into what happens in the classroom, and it is monitored, it's evaluated, and it's expected, as opposed to in the old days, the one or two-shot professional development, which was implemented by a few people and not by others, and then forgotten after a period of time.
And I will say we have supports to continue that after that professional development. Our coaches are in place to continue supporting teachers in the implementation of those skills or strategies or ideas. The guidance department has ongoing meetings to support and reflect on that implementation. And in some cases, we have consultants coming back in to go into classrooms and observe the feedback, not value the feedback, to support that as well. So we're trying to build in that long-term support in addition to the day professional development. And in closing, the last two pages of that document is a schedule of when those are happening. You're always invited to join us for any of those if you're curious and collect a remark. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Comparative attendance, I think Janice was part of your request, but it would be on the agenda.
Yes.
Last year, I know that all of the schools had initiatives to try to improve school attendance, and because of reports about the high levels of absences throughout the district, and with the information that we have, fully, you can see that the schools have been extremely successful in the work that they did last year on improving the attendance. I would say in some cases tremendously, I see 20 or 30% less students in many areas here that are increased by 20%, I should say. So I know we'll be hearing more about that at a subsequent meeting, but I wanted to pursue that data so that, and I hope that the schools will continue those initiatives this year so that the attendance remains low, the absenteeism remains low. I know the high schools were awarding prizes for those with perfect attendance, and the elementary schools were having challenges in the classrooms, and middle school were giving incentives to students while it paid off. And you can't earn it if you're not doing it. Thank you for asking that. Arms Field Trip fundraiser.
I have a motion that we...
Second.
That's okay, you have a call, you have it right.
Yeah, we got it right.
We have a, we have a motion made in second to approve the Arms fundraisers as submitted. Any discussion? Seeing not all is in favor. Athol High School Chromebook donation. Mitch?
Before we entirely leave that last topic, I wanted to extend my thanks, not just to the principal, but also to the all the individuals that work with me, parents and teachers, helping to raise money and support lots of the activities. Thank you.
Chromebook donation to Athol High School.
We have an anonymous donor that would like to donate 60, 70 Chromebooks for our social studies department. The donor has a relationship with one of our staff members, and they plan to give themselves anonymous, but specifically towards the students and the curriculum for social studies.
I think the motion we accept him.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Seeing not all is in favor.
Just add, accept it, thanks.
Any further? Chuck?
Is there an issue with, you know, maybe?
I don't think that there is an issue that, you know, the donation is part of the blessing that the person's giving to the school. It's not uncommon that sometimes it's an involuntary or particularly big donations because they intend, you know, so it's not legally.
Okay. We have general rules.
Any further discussion? Seeing not all is in favor. Dan White up there. Athol High School supply donation, Dollar Tree.
We got a phone call from Dollar Tree Athol. They had over 400 items that they were originally supposed to distribute to another organization. The organization didn't need the supplies, they contacted us to check and see if we were interested in over 400 supplies, pens, pencils, markers, highlighters, notebooks, file folders, things like that that we intend to make available to our teachers who then give those to the students for educational purposes.
Move to accept with her.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing not all is in favor. Dan White still up there. Athol High School piano donation.
So we have, one of our faculty members looking to get rid of her piano. Did you share the description? I didn't have the description.
It's okay, I want it.
It's okay.
So we're looking, the music director took a look at it, it's much better than anything we have, so he's looking to take in his donation, recycle it, something else.
Mitch?
Move to accept, thanks.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Dan?
Okay.
All those in favor? Close.
It's for, really?
Who's going to vote?
Dave.
Not me.
And Saint Gene.
Get the football team.
We have a request to approve Superintendent Fernandez's, the approved CAPS board funder.
I make a motion to accept.
Wow, John, you're up.
Yes, he is, we're moving this one.
As you know, we normally approve superintendent position to be a member of CAPS. Any discussion? Seeing not all is in favor. As per usual, you have in your packet communications regarding enrollments. Financial statements, Lynn is not present tonight, but you do have your to-date expenditure report overview, you have your to-date revenue report. There is no vote for budget line transfers this evening, and there's also a to-date grant report overview. This for tonight, this, you want to discuss that?
Yeah, I just, we put a new recording, and this is one of the recommendations from state, to make sure you are aware of grant funding that we have and where we are spending the money. So you will notice in the report, each of the first column is each of the current grants that we have, the second column is how much we're receiving, who's managing the grant, and then exactly what it's paid for. So if anybody has any questions, I just want to make sure somebody has an opportunity to ask.
The FY '20 grant budget vote, that's something we need to do tonight.
Right. I make a motion to accept it. That's intended.
There's a motion made in second to approve different sort of grants for a total of $1,298,681. Motion made in second, any discussion? Seeing not all is in favor. Other, I'm not aware with public means, but she's not here, so it's coming along.
Usually she just puts that case up.
Strategic plan update, review of draft.
Yes, so essentially the last view, I gave everybody a copy of the plan. I'm not going to spend any time on it tonight, because basically we listened to the professional development in lines with this document. But I just wanted to make sure I gave everybody an option to ask any questions and then we'll do a vote, a approval comment.
All right, under reports of the committee.
It's got to be voted out.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
No, I just moved that second.
Motion to be by Carl in second. Any discussion? Seeing not all is in favor. All right, reports of the committees. Under the report of the chair, the only thing I have, I know that Nancy has expressed interest in attending the CPAC training, it's getting brought till the third at 3:00 PM. I'm going to try, okay. I am unable because it's daytime hours. I'm presuming that John probably can't at his daytime hours, so if there's anyone else that wishes to go, I'm not opposed to opening it to as many that want to go. However, I just need to know that because if we do happen to have six or more, we should post it as a meeting, Justin Case, you're not going to be delivering anything but, I'm going to go to...
Do you know where this is going to be?
Arms Library.
When is this, we'll turn this repeat best.
This is the CPAC training that was recently discussed.
Dr. Johnson, 3:00.
Yep. October what?
Third.
So that's nothing that he's voted, but just...
I think it's an hour and a half.
Just let me know if you want to know, and then I'll play by ear where you guys do want to hear. Okay? Thank you. That's all I have. Budget, finance, accounting.
I know. Budget, we met, and it's all that we, I really don't have the most, sorry.
Facilities. The report is in your packet, we met last week, because we had to pay some bills to Rocky, primarily with the window project. I attended these meetings at the high school yesterday with the contractors. We wish it were done, it wasn't, but they were in full force today. They said that they anticipated about 24 in the mayor. I didn't stop by the high school, but I know that there were all kinds of lifts and vehicles that were there working on the project. Substantial completion is September 30th. We're waiting for things like shades and universals. On track. Negotiations.
Negotiations is ongoing right now. The subcommittee actually met tonight, and our next meeting with the ATA will be on September 23rd.
Excellent.
I think this morning, the presentation that Molly did tonight was really what was on the meeting this morning.
Could I please request an executive meeting for negotiations from next month?
Public relations.
The takeaway from the public relations subcommittee meeting, which was yesterday, no, last week, excuse me, is very heartening. It's that basically everything we have been talking about since last June, in the few meetings we've had, is already underway or completed. The communication and events calendar, which we wanted to see on the website and really easily accessible, things that, so that anybody, parent or school committee member, could find out what was happening in any given school at any given time, it's there. We have to check on it to see whether it is functioning the way we hoped. The item number two, the responses to the parent surveys and implementation of those surveys, that's underway, and the, one of the major issues was socioemotional learning. We're having assemblies at schools that focus on bullying. Social emotional learning curriculum is being put together, the wraparound program that Shirley Mitchell told us about is happening, and there's a new staff press release in process so people can know who has just been hired. The public relations and communication tasks that this committee has been focusing on have been implemented so thoroughly that we have to define what we're doing for next year, you know, what, what we want to see the community know about.
Okay, thank you. Policy.
Policy, I'm going to start with the second reading for K F R, the Department of Act, it was not in the packet, we should know that came tonight. This was, just to remind you, this was, this is the community use of school facilities that was re-actually returned to the policy committee after the last meeting. And Fred has been consulting with this too, and changes number two are highlighted in yellow, and this was by suggestion of our council. And the committee met this morning, the policy committee met this morning, and they made a little change to eleven, and on the other side, we'll start section on group four. So I'm presenting this for a second meeting.
Is there a motion?
I have, I have.
Oh, hey.
So in discussion with Deb Metzger, she said that in relation to number two, and correctly, my mother, that there could be circumstances where you would want to reduce the rate in group four. And so if you look at the document in certain identified situations in number eleven, you know, the superintendent has discretion to reduce a rate in a particular circumstance of discretion with the, you know, added language. So with number two, there's no such discretion embedded, so if that's something that the school committee might want to do on occasion, there probably should be an additional sentence to two that says, for example, the rates may be reduced by the school committee.
I make a motion that that be accepted.
Any further discussion on that? Being approved for the second reading as amended?
Fred. So it says the, and this is only with regard to two, that that requires school committee approval, the rates may be reduced by the school committee.
By the school committee or the super?
By the school committee, so let me point out the difference. Number eleven is where it goes to the superintendent. Number two, where it's an outside, individual, private, or commercial purpose, the request requires school committee approval, so you know the outside group, and you're usually approving the number one. So if, if you did that, they would be required to pay whatever's in group four, but in a particular circumstance, you may decide that is too costly and you still want the government to do it. But your policy doesn't give you discretion. So you just add the one sentence to number two that says, just like the number eleven, but in this case, for number two only, the rates may be reduced by the school committee. So it's only with regard to, Mitch.
However, in that number two, the, this request requires school committee approval, I understand that, but that, that, when that's stated, that means that the school facilities may not be used unless it's determined, et cetera, for the particular purposes. So that request that the facilities be used for these particular purposes, that requires the school committee approval. It would seem to me still that it would be the superintendent that would approve, that would, that would suggest and approve the amount. The school committee just is, is only approving the right to use the facilities, it's still the superintendent's right to decide on a lower price, not the school committee's right.
Well, you could do it that way. I mean, the school committee's rights are what the school committee determines. So there's no state law that sets it's determined by the superintendent. So if you wanted the rates to be determined by the superintendent regardless of the circumstance, you could do that. So this was limited to, because it was a hot issue, use for individual, private, or commercial purposes, so that's for profit.
Right.
So if it's for profit, it goes to the school committee, and I had suggested that the rates may be reduced by the school committee in a, you know, in a particular circumstance, probably should say that. But if the school committee just wanted the approval by the school committee and the rate to be determined by the superintendent in that circumstance, then you leave two and eleven alone. They don't become a tennis.
Carl.
That was what you just said, Fred, certainly our intention as a subcommittee, as of this morning, we hashed it out pretty thoroughly. Just personally, I think it makes far more sense for a single person, superintendent, to set fees for an organization that's been permitted by the school committee than to have hashed out of the table of candidates. It's more, it's more efficient and-
Just as a point of clarification, we have a motion on the floor to approve the language that Fred stated. The motion could be-
Okay, well, I'm addressing the motion.
I am with drawing that motion.
I think anything that requires school committee approvals should be changed, embedded by the school committee. I don't understand why this would be a problem for us to do our local duties, if these are outside, private, and commercial entities, we want to know about them. We're going to see it and approve it. I mean, we either approve the fee or approve the lower fee. I don't understand why we would want to go through the process of bringing it to a meeting, vote it, and then send it back for a reduced fee, when we can just do it this year. You always have the packet a month ahead.
One?
Yeah.
There's one possibility is to say fees for such an activity may be reduced by the school committee on the recommendation of the superintendent, or something like that.
I just-
I just don't think we should be sitting around talking about-
It's our job.
A hundred dollars versus two hundred dollars.
It's our, like, the job to do this. I mean, personally, I've, I've said this, every year I've sat here, that we should not be charging for our community fee, our community facilities. They're paid for by tax dollars already. We should allow people to use them. I mean, that's how we get better interest in the district, et cetera. But I mean, I get it, if you want to have a policy, I'm just, I don't know if we want Superintendent Fernandez to make those decisions. I mean, she's going to have to look at every single case, she's going to have to try to, you know, I mean, she's got more important things to do than to determine costs on facilities. I mean, we're only talking about the ones that come to us, that may come to us once a year. I mean, we don't, we haven't seen a community use facility in the past probably five years. So I mean, I just, I'm just saying that I don't think, I want her to concentrate on things she needs to concentrate on, not having to deal with this all the time, or something that we could do. Thank you.
The reason why this topic even came up is we have for-profit businesses using our facility, but against our policy. So I want to make sure that people understand that. It wasn't, we just decided to go ahead and put together a fee schedule, but the level was approval had been given to non-for-profit businesses to use our facility even though our policy said no. And so that's why it was due, brought to the table, and one of the things that I want to make sure we're careful of is there's an equity issue that we don't want to get ourselves in. So we don't want to get ourselves in a situation where we say, well, this person and this individual and this thing offer something different than this one, this one, and now we end up in an equity issue where we're not, we're charging some and we're not charging others. That's why this was brought to the table, to try to make sure it was equitable across the board, no matter who comes forth. And I just go back to, you know, my concern of the consequences when we make a decision that some people can get it, some people can't, will that put the district in a precarious position? When I had talked to Fred about this prior, Fred's recommendation to me was we should not be using private entities to use our facilities. So that's, you know, and we got pushbacks, and we went back to the fee schedule. I just worry and I'm concerned that we don't want to be in a situation where we feel like we're favoring both some groups versus other. I don't want to be in that precarious position, in order to make the school committee sure. So I just put that out as my problem.
I have no problem with the, with Carl's suggestion as recommended, but I mean, if we have to approve those types, we're the ones that should have to approve the fee too. So if you want to word it so that, you know, the fee is upon recommendation of superintendent-
I just suggested that word instead.
Yep.
I would second that.
Good, so are you, was that a motion?
I, I move that we add to section two, fees for such activity may be reduced by the school committee as recommended by the superintendent.
Bill, you will second that?
I, I'll finish, okay, you may second it. We, I, I agree with your point. You know, if the school committee is going to make an exception to the rules, I think the school committee should be the one that sets the fees. There's no reason to set any, to, to put a superintendent in a hot seat for something that we're deciding that we're going to make for an exception. We should, we should be the ones, if there's going to be a hot seat, we should be the ones that are in it, not the superintendent.
So a motion by Carlos to add the language that included the recommendation by the superintendent. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor.
Yeah, I kind of agree with what Bill had to say. There's a bit of politicians in the other senses, like a political climate is supposedly maybe putting the superintendent, you know, she could be with it.
Mitch.
To my knowledge, the superintendent has always been in charge of that. When I was principal, anytime there's a need to use the rules in community school, for example, we want superintendent, I signed off on the superintendent for permission, and if there's a fee charged, it was adjudicated by the superintendent. I don't think there's any great change here. And ultimately, if the superintendent recommends a certain amount and the school committee approves it, then ultimately we are in the hot seat because we make the final judgment on that by approving what the superintendent has recommended.
That's indicated by the current motion on the floor.
Yes, yes.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Both.
Yeah, I don't know, I think that's, I'm confused because the top didn't want the superintendent to have to-
Then you would have-
The motion is to amend, sorry, the original motion for approval.
Why, why don't you read the motion? So everyone understands what Carlos said.
The rates may be reduced by the school committee as recommended by the superintendent.
In such a case, in, I don't-
I don't too, yeah.
Ken, why do we need the superintendent's recognition?
That's the motion.
That's the, that's the motion.
If you're not, if you're not in favor of that, or you can hold it up, or hold it up. Yep. Okay, so I'll do this again. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. So that's one, two, three, four, five. And opposed, one, two, three, four. The chair will not vote for this at all. So that would be amended.
Do we have to vote now?
Now we should vote that else.
The motion as amended.
So we are back to the original test, or which reading is this? So it's still the second, or, as amended? Is there a motion?
I, I move that we, move that we adopt this community use of school facilities policy as amended for a second reading.
So is that, okay? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor.
In the third reading, we have PFD male change, GDI staff dispositions, one of the ladies, GCVV is a member of principals, and GC staff professional staff hiring, and these are all for a third reading.
Who can approve their reading?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor.
Good. Regardless of the price, we have a lot of school districts getting in trouble by having to stand in, you know, fees for parents. How do you handle that?
Don't, because we don't have enough.
Breakfast and lunch.
Breakfast and lunch, so no one pays, everyone has to pay for a set meal, in which case they have to have money to buy something. So we don't have that on our home base.
What's we need, one more?
Are you ready?
Yes, yeah.
I make a motion to-
Second. Oh, I forgot, committee reversed. Sorry. I'll try to do this, is there any committee member that has a referral? Seeing none, all is in favor. Both, yeah. Nancy, who seconded that? Okay, John, John's second.
The second, see.